I'd like to call the April 19th meeting of the Middletown City School District Board of Education to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I guess I'm doing that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Zucks, could you please do the mission statement?
We strive to provide physical, sound, educational opportunity in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mrs. Zucks. Going to ask for the approval of the agenda, motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Mrs. Knack?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mr. Pierre?
Mr. Biason?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Yep.
Mrs. Zucks?
Here.
Okay, we are done with that, and now we'll go on to approve the agenda. So let's have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Passed unanimously, thank you. Prove the regular minutes, the April 5th, 2018, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recognizations and announcements and community reports, and we have some special recognition this evening. Pastor Williams, do you want to...
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce a wonderful group of young people, specifically from Middletown High School, who was very instrumental in the March for Our Lives that took place on the 23rd of March. Coincidentally, these young people were also instrumental in organizing the walkout earlier that same month, and in turn, as one of the co-organizers along with, adult co-organizers along with some other great individuals, more specifically Pastor Charles Ryu of the St. Paul's Presbyterian Church, and along with Mr. Crescenzo and some others, thank you, were able to connect with this wonderful group of young people, their teachers, the administrators, amen. I say amen, you see, amen, so let it be, that's what a preacher does. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, these young people who are here tonight to make a presentation so wonderfully represented our district, our community, and themselves. And so, we thought it would be fitting that these future leaders of tomorrow, and actually, they're not the leaders of tomorrow, they're actually the leaders of today, and so, we thought it would be wonderful for them to come and to make a presentation on their experience with this particular march, and even to talk about where we go from here, and where their experiences are going to lead them from here. So, I'm not going to introduce them by name, they'll introduce themselves, but I do want to say this, as a parent, as somebody who grew up in this community, and as a board member, I couldn't be any more prouder of these young people and what they've accomplished, what they've accomplished, not what we've accomplished, but what they've accomplished. And so, they're going to come, they're going to introduce themselves, they're going to give you their presentation, and show you just really how wonderful they are. So, with that being said, who's... Come on. Yes, go to the mic, go to the podium, and go for it.
Good evening, members of the board and those who are here. I'm Salma Zenaidi, and I first want to personally thank Mr. Delmore and the board for helping and supporting our movement. This all got started when I was watching CNN Town Hall, and I was furious that nobody in our school was doing anything. Then I thought, why not do it myself? I emailed my chemistry teacher, Ms. Babin, and I told her my ideas, and she immediately told me to go to Ms. Sorrentino. I scheduled a meeting later that day. Although I was nervous that it might not work out, eventually, it got around to Ms. Chaluzian, and she strung all the students together that were willing to be a part of it, and was more than helpful. I now introduce Megan Dupin.
Good evening. On March 14th, students were dismissed at the start of third period. They... Oh, sorry, I'm Megan. They were dismissed at the start of third period and had the option to either walk outside or sit in the auditorium. Outside, students marched in the upper bus loop while holding signs and yelling chants like, hey, hey, ho, ho, school violence has got to go. I spoke along with Logan Gonzalez, Salma Zenaidi, and Andrea Cortez about school safety, being an inclusive school community, and we reassured the students that their voices deserve to be heard. Throughout this movement, students have been realizing that they do have a voice. From high school to elementary school, students have stood in solidarity with Parkland victims. On March 24th, at the March for Our Lives event in Middletown, we mobilized between 1,200 and 1,500 people. We had a rally at the skate park, and students spoke about our right to be safe, responsible gun reform, and gun safety, along with civic involvement. Cory White talked about his son Cory, a former Middletown and high school student who was killed by gun violence. This movement was meant to show our solidarity with the victims in Parkland, Florida, along with all other gun violence victims. We also wanted to show that we know the security systems are, and it's our job to save ourselves I'd like to now introduce Shane Johnson.
Good morning, proud members of the community, esteemed members of the board. My name is Shane Johnson, and I'd like to bring to your attention the enormous effect that our displays of great willpower, collaboration, confidence in ourselves and in our allies, and confidence in our ability have had on our students' psyche. Following the momentum of our student walkout at the school, we students gathered two of our most trusted staff members, Ms. Chaluzian and Ms. Sorrentino, to inquire about whether or not there was something more that we could do to show the world that we meant business. The result of that conversation was a great opportunity in which all of our talents were utilized and our nerves were put to the test. The March for Our Lives. March for Our Lives was a fruitful day because, in effect, it opened the eyes of the community to the fact that we were much more close knit than what we had thought prior to this day. It opened our eyes to the fact that our sentiment may not be shared by everybody, but there are always people who do and who are willing to fight with you. And even for those who don't share your viewpoint, they would love the opportunity to discuss it. And that is the next step that the march has provided for us, a discussion. The students have all shown that they have opinions, that they are aware of the state of crisis their home is currently in. And with the march, we have answered their wants and proven to them and to ourselves that we have a voice. There will no longer be silence among our student body about the going-ons of the outside world, because we all know that we can no longer look at it as though it were the outside world. We know that this is something that concerns us, and as such, we have chosen to concern ourselves with it. We wanted to say thank you for your support and encouragement for everything. We have taken the initiative to build a better world for ourselves and future scholars alike. We've uploaded a video recap to the MHAS Way webpage, and at your convenience, we'd like you to watch it. Thank you.
So, also here tonight with us are Anna and David, and they were also a very crucial part. They played a very crucial role in the support of both the walkout and the march. And so, next we have, so for April 20th, we are not planning a walkout. We plan on doing a type of education with the rest of the students, and we'll be setting up a display about gun violence. And lastly, we'd like to express our gratitude to the board members, school administrators, and teachers for supporting us throughout this movement. You each had a hand in helping our voices be heard, and unlike many other school districts in the area, we have the support and encouragement of our entire administration to speak out for what we believe in and to stand up for ourselves. We could not have been so successful without your support, and we hope to continue working in attempts to make our school community a safer environment for our students and staff. Thank you.
I would be remiss, and I did this purposely, I did this purposely. I wanted them to go and to make their presentation, but I would be remiss if I didn't give an opportunity to the principal of Middletown High School, Ms. Sorrentino, and their teacher, Ms. Chaluzian, to have a few words to say at the end of this. They were extremely integral in the process of this, and so, we want to give them an opportunity to have something to say as well.
Good evening, Superintendent Delmore, President Perino, members of the board. This has been an exciting experience for us. It's a game changer. We embarked right after the Parkland shooting on a mission. It is the scariest moment in time for any educator, any parent, to hear of that many victims shot senselessly. You come to school the next morning, early, and you look around and you have to make a choice. What are you focusing on for the day? Safety, taking care of your kids. What do you do first? You do all of it. I was greeted on that day with a young lady by the name of Salma, who had a plan and a vision, and she knew who to go to, she knew to get to Ms. Chaluzian, because between the two of them, they were going to track me down in my hunt to make everything a hard target and make our day special, and they did. And they thought deeper. We need to do more. We partnered with our school students very quickly on that day and asked them to make the choice to be safe long-term and to trust us to help create the voice for them that represents the students of Middletown High School, and who they are, and they're extraordinary. And they showed that, and then they kept going, and they partnered, and they led that day with grace, with spirit, and they led over 1,000 students in a very, very, very cold bus loop chanting to be safe, and they've committed to it. I can't thank Ms. Chaluzian and our staff enough for their support, their kind words, their keeping their kids close to their hearts, and they did. In addition to that, we've moved on. It's not one day, it's not one movement, it's what we can do to partner with our staff and our students to make our building safe in each and every day. So we continue to meet. We meet at least weekly, some members I meet with daily. Thank you, Megan. And we... And Ms. Chaluzian. In order to plan the activities that bring us together and change our culture to become a cohesive unit, because they were a cohesive unit that day and they continue to be, so I thank them, I'm incredibly proud of them. For those of you that were at the march, I was very close to them, I was right near them on that stage, it was a big growth moment for Tracy, in that Tracy's learning to let go just a little bit and let them be on that stage. But thank you all for supporting them, and stay tuned for more to come. Ms. Chaluzian?
So, I'm going to say thank you. I'm not the best speaker, if anyone's ever interacted with me, and I think the students really said it best. So I just want to leave with one thing, and I want to say that if you give them the opportunity, they will change the world. So if we continue to do so, that is our goal.
Go ahead, John, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Bishop Williams. You know, sometimes people feel that this Board of Education does not listen. You may or may not remember that when I spoke at the podium during the march, I said that your safety is our most important concern. I saw anger, I saw fear, I saw the fact that sometimes we didn't know what to do. But what we have done in this budget, which we're going to adopt tonight, hopefully, we're going to put a school resource officer in every school, in every school in this district. So we did listen. We're also going to, in the budget, is additional security aides, an additional help in the realm of psychology, psychologists. We're also looking at other measures, and some of these measures I can't go into this evening, but there are also, everything, as I said, is on the table. We want you to be safe, you deserve to be safe in your schools. We do not want you to have to worry about going to schools, being bullied, or somebody coming into the schools and creating an incident. That's not what school is about, and that's not what we are about here. So, thank you for doing what you've done. You certainly raise a conscience of the entire nation, and you more specifically, this entire community. You're a wonderful group, and as Bishop Williams said, you are the future leaders. The torch is being passed to your generation. Mr. Delmore, I think you wanted to...
I just would like to add that how proud we are of you for your courage, because it's not easy to do what you did and what you continue and plan to do. Everyone wants to be part of the group, and to a large extent, that's fine, but when we step out of that comfort zone, it takes a lot of courage to do what you did. I was there that cold morning, and I supported you for the efforts to have your voices heard, because that's what a school community should be, a living environment, active students in there, working with their staff. Again, I'd like to thank Ms. Chaluzian and all the other staff that worked with you that weren't able to come this evening, but I do know that there was just more than one of you, and obviously, this wouldn't be possible without the principal, Ms. Sorrentino's approval of all of this and allowing this to occur, but I am extremely proud of you because you have demonstrated to our school community, to the citywide community, to the state community, what is another contributive factor, you, of what is right with the Middletown public schools, and I thank you genuinely.
Can I take one more thing real quick? I'd like to get a photo of everyone, I think Bishop Williams would like to say something.
One last thing, I think it's important, these young people are from the high school, but I think it's also important to note that during the march, some of our most dynamic speakers, aside from these young people and other community speakers, came from out of our middle schools and our elementary schools. And so, we applaud this entire district. All of these young people are fantastic. It shows that we have a bright future. No matter what the darkness says, no matter what's going on in the world, we prosper in the dark, and we stand and we continue to rise. So, I applaud you. In fact, before we even take the picture, I want to give you a standing ovation and invite anybody else that's here to stand with me and applaud them.
Going up, I'd like to thank again Mr. Crescenzo and Bishop Williams. Thank you for acting as liaisons. Let's now do some individual recognitions and announcements, and Mr. Crescenzo, would you like to go first, because...
Just a little side note, I was in Mrs. Sorrentino's office the day of the march, and the Situation Room in the White House has nothing to do, has nothing on your room. Big whiteboard with 100 different things and boxes and things, she had a finger on all of it. In recognition of Holocaust Remembrance Day, the Twin Towers Program invited a Mrs. Marian Blumenthal-Lazan, who wrote a book called The Four Perfect Pebbles, and it was about her experience. She was five years old in 1938, '39, and lived in Germany, and they saw the storm coming. At five years old, almost six, they had Kristallnacht where the Germans broke all the windows of the Jewish store owners. They were forced to wear the Star of David that said Judean on it. So they saw that, and they knew it was not going to get any better, so they left and went to Holland, and they actually bought a ticket on the Holland Line, now it's called the Holland American Line, to come to the United States. But unfortunately, time ran out, and the Germans invaded Holland, and they rounded up as many of the Jewish populations as they could find. And for the next six and a half years, Ms. Blumenthal-Lazan wound up first in internment camps, which wasn't, you know, it was horrible, but the worst was yet to come, and she moved from camp to camp, and it became more severe, and then finally, she wound up in Bergen-Belsen. And her story is, basically, really starts there, about the horrors and man's incredible inhumanity to man, and what they had to deal with and put up with, and I'm not going to go into the details, but one of the things, she was just a child, so now she's about seven years old, and she needed coping mechanisms to deal with this, and families were separated, and she was in the courtyard, there was nothing. All they had were the very few clothes they had on their back and nothing, no personal artifacts or articles. She found four pebbles on the ground, and she called them the Four Perfect Pebbles because she related these pebbles to her family, her father, her brother, her mother, and herself, and she carried them throughout the entire experience. Time was running out, and they were moved from Bergen-Belsen to Auschwitz, and that's the death camp. When you go there, your future is very, very bleak. And this was early 1945, and what was in her favor is that Germany was definitely losing the war at this time, and what should have been a 10-hour train ride in a cattle car with, that could, if you were going to put people in the car, maybe it would hold 100, but they had 500 or 600 people in this car with no food, no water, no sanitary conditions, what have you. What should have taken 10 hours took almost two weeks, because the German infrastructure was destroyed by the Allies and the confusion of the end of the war. They got within 10 or 15 miles of the death camp, and the war was over, and all that happened was they just opened the car doors, on the cattle car doors, and they were free. And they really didn't know what to do at that point, because it was six and a half years of this. She survived and wrote this book, and now she travels the world telling her story, and what, Mr. Perino and I were there, one of the things, I mean, we're talking to junior high kids and the auditorium, sixth and seventh graders, you could have heard a pin drop. She spoke for well over an hour, and she spoke to them. You know, I'm sure when she speaks to different audiences, she speaks to whatever level is there, but she spoke to them, and you could see the look on their faces, and I'm pretty sure that most of these kids really did not know the details as much as Mrs. Lazan went into, and they listened. And at the end, they asked really good questions, and she was just so warm and accepting and answered their questions honestly and what have you. So that was one of the more amazing functions that I've been to in the district, not that all of them aren't really exceptional, but, you know, obviously, I'd like to thank Mr. Dean for arranging this to happen, but Dina Johnson, the eighth-grade English teacher, I guess she read the book and looked into it and realized that Mrs. Blumenthal-Lazan tours the world giving speeches about this. And then, as important, maybe more, Karen Cecil, the librarian, developed lesson plans on the Holocaust, and for a week or so before the assembly, the students came into the library and learned in more detail what they were going to hear at this assembly. So, you know, I left a little bit shaken, you know, listening to this, and these people, her family, were one of the very, 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 very few fortunate to have survived all of this. But her strength, she's not angry at anybody, but her mission, now she's in her mid-80s, her mission is to, until she cannot do it anymore, is to spread this word around the world that we should never forget, and just, you know, give a heartfelt lesson on survival and the indomitable human spirit. So I appreciated being at that assembly, and it was just an amazing day. Thank you.
You know, Vince, just to piggyback on what you've said, Karen Cecil borrowed four, or eight, large panels, and Dina Johnson and Karen, as you mentioned, they did a whole unit on the Holocaust, which is a terrible, terrible period, as again you said, in history. Just carrying that one step forward, the day after, there was a Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony at Temple Sinai, and speaking to some of the individuals here, I was telling them what our district did. Some said that in certain districts, the students don't even know what the Holocaust is, they don't even know what Auschwitz is, but we have units on this in our district. Paula, did you want...
I just wanted to make note of a, I have the figures here, as of April 12th of this year, just the other day... As of April 12th of this year, just the other day, according to the Holocaust Claims Conference, only 31% of Americans believe fewer than 2 million Jews were killed in the Holocaust. So...
Say that again?
31% of Americans believe that fewer than 2 million Jews were killed in the Holocaust. So, almost a third of our country believes that less than 2 million were killed in the Holocaust. How many, how many people were actually killed in the Hol- how many Jews were killed in the Holocaust?
Six million.
Six million, plus additional, additional groups, everything from African-American at the time to LGBTQ, which was not even a thing back then. So, there were many people who were lost, many generations and generations that were lost. So, that's, as of the 12th, and this is the Holocaust Claims Conference, which is responsible for, I'll say, distributing funds and services to Holocaust survivors. So, they do this on a regular, they do this research on a regular basis. Also, just 41% of Americans cannot say what Auschwitz was. So, we just heard about Auschwitz, which was the, probably the, one of the worst concentration camps. I mean, there wasn't a good concentration camp, but one of the death camps, and not knowing what that was. So, 41% of Americans can't say what that was. So, it's really, I know that it's part of our curriculum, I know it's part of the New York State curriculum, I know that it is, but we're not, you know, there's clearly memory loss. There's clearly just a point at which the generations don't remember, and we just have to continue to remind ourselves that what happened, happened over a period of 14 years with Hitler's rise to power. And certainly, we have to remember those things because we live in a world right now where other things are happening, other atrocities are happening in other countries, and so we need to be, we need to remember the past in order not to repeat it. So, I just wanted to add on to that. I attended, of course, the Temple Sinai Holocaust Remembrance, also attended the Holocaust Remembrance Program that was held at SUNY Orange. And that was, that was also, that was a little bit different about the stress, post-traumatic stress disorder of Holocaust victims and Holocaust survivors, and their, the second generation as well as the third generation. It didn't just affect the survivor, it affects, it affects generation after generation in different ways. So, it's very interesting. So, thank you for the time to share that. Thank you.
I just want to add to the whole, with respect to the Holocaust. I remember over 20 years ago, then Governor Christine Whitman proposed that every student in New Jersey High School should get a chance to see the film Schindler's List. If Schindler's List, or reading Eli Wiesel's Night, visiting the Holocaust Museum here in New York or our nation's capital, or the sacred impression opportunity to interact with Holocaust victims still around, I think that's important for students, so that they can learn the historical and moral lesson behind this, that of the message of never again. Never again such a tragedy should ever occur. Never again to the house of Abraham, never again to anything, especially as Ms. Blumenthal pointed out, when you look at, or not particularly in the Middle East, the persecution against Christians, the persecution against Muslim minorities. We need to take a step, not us who, and not our when, and Holocaust education is the most important focus.
Thank you for those words, Mr. Gomez. Paula, did you have anything else you want to...
No, no, that's it. Thank you. That was, that was, yeah. Oh, there was one other thing. I did, I attended also, Orange County School Boards held their prospective school board member forum this past Saturday. I, right, it was Saturday, yes. I was invited as a seasoned board member, and because of my involvement, of course, with Orange County School Boards and New York State School Boards, they asked me for my, for my insight, looking back through my six years of being a school board member. And so, I really enjoyed it, it was a very engaging conversation. So, I was very, I was very honored to be asked to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your participation. Mrs. Zucks, go ahead.
I first wanted to just say that tonight just made me smile, just to see how well our children are doing. They always make me smile, I enjoy when they come out, and the things that they accomplish, they are so bright. And when we give them the reins, they never, they never let us down. They're always rising to this level that is remarkable. I also had gone out April 13th for the fashion show, the last meeting that I had mentioned. They did an awesome job at the fashion show, I just wanted to mention that. And I also wanted to thank Roy from Fuller's Men's Shop, and also Ms. Bloomingfield from...
Blooffield.
Yes, thank you, from, yes, the Temple Sinai. She was able to give us the gowns and cocktail dresses. They're also still available for our kids for the prom. And also for men, for Roy at the Fuller's Men's Shop, he's also doing the suits. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was a wonderful fashion show the kids put on. They also wore their own clothing and brought back the 80s and the 90s, they went back in time. That was very nice as well. That's when they're doing the additional prom. This Sunday, April 22nd, at 12:30 until 6:00 PM, at Temple Sinai Prom Extravaganza Event, the huge thanks goes to Shop Right and Dunkin' Donuts for providing food for all those occasions. Prom teams will also receive their gowns and suits for free of no charge. So, everything is free. So, just the way any of our kids who do want to go to prom and are having any issues with getting clothing, you know, there are ways to get them, which the gowns and clothes were absolutely gorgeous. Gorgeous. I don't know where they're getting them from, but they're gorgeous. So, and then, the other thing that I did want to bring up is that tomorrow, there's a tricky tray, which I know someone had brought up that they're going to a tricky tray last week, that the last one, but there's another tricky tray, so I'm going to try and make my way there tomorrow. It is at William A. Carter. I believe calling starts at 7:00, doors open at 5:00.
Thank you very much, and we did write letters to the, those involved in Temple Sinai, and also Fuller's Men's Shop was involved, and we again thank them for their participation, not only in the fashion show, but in the event that's going to occur at the temple on Sunday. So, very good, and thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Pierre, you can, you're going to talk about today's event, correct?
Yes, as usual, I'm going to keep it brief. Just a few hours ago, right outside here in the hallways of this school here, I met some great leaders in history, some great inventors during the Presidential Park Elementary School Living Wax Museum. There were several students involved with this project, several teachers, and they all did an excellent, excellent job. We had the opportunity to ask questions to the students as far as the person that they were representing, and they all had some very interesting information to share. It was a very well put together event. I couldn't, there were so many kids in the hallway, I couldn't even put a number to it, there's so many of them, I couldn't count, I couldn't keep the count. It was a very, very well put together event, I really enjoyed it. Mr. Perino, of course, was in attendance as well, did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre, Mr. Pierre, and his wife was there supporting the demonstration and the event. And, you know, there were students there, they did tremendous amount of research, sports figures, political figures, civil rights figures, famous women in history. And one student who reported on Abraham Lincoln, he was all dressed up with a little mustache and so on, he held a photo up, and what impressed me was one quote of Lincoln. "I walk slowly, but I never go backwards." Now, you can apply this to many, many things. And sometimes in our district, we take our time, we get the program done, but we don't want to go backwards. So, it was, it was a great show all around, and the fifth-grade students, they spent a large amount of time researching, researching their individuals.
That's it. Also, I just want to give a special shout-out to my son Zachary. He followed his older brother's footsteps. A few years ago, his brother Christian was Nelson Mandela, and that's what he picked for his presentation. I thought he did a great job as well.
Thank you again, Mr. Pierre. Mrs. Knapp, go ahead. Mr. Gomez, you went, correct?
Go ahead. First, I want to congratulate again our students here for being trailblazers of the 21st century. President Kennedy said, "Ask God what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." They're asking, they're doing, they're making a difference. Godspeed and keep up the great work. The Fair Funding Committee is embarking on addressing the issue of unfunded mandates. We're very grateful from the support we're getting from the administration and providing for us resources that we're looking at, and we hope in the not-so-far future to meet with our local state legislatures to see what is being done in Albany, or how we could assist in making sure that we could relieve the burden that unfunded mandates impose on not just school districts, but even municipalities. So, that's an issue we're working on. And I want to recognize, so I'll give a shout-out to the members of our committee, Fran Glickman, Linda Johnson, and our very own Keisha Zucks, who's an outstanding member with much passion as well in making a difference with our Fair Funding Committee. So, we're grateful for their work. April 23rd, I believe, a Monday, Presidential Park Elementary School will be holding their book fair. And then, speaking about book fair, I think it's proper that we know the passing of our former First Lady Barbara Bush. During her tenure as First Lady, which were my college years, it brings back memories, she championed the cause of childhood literacy, a cause dear to our school district. And I think in remembering our former First Lady, I think it's good to, as parents, as educators, we continue to emphasize the importance that every child has a chance to read, master reading, because that opens the doors to so many opportunities. When I was a child, I remember when my mother used to go and pay her bills once a month, card assistance and all the other utility bills, there was a discount store right next to the place where she used to pay her electricity bills. And there they had, back then for 50 cents to 75 cents, the Random McKinley Books for Children. And she would always buy me a book, and I would have her read me the story again and again and again. I still have the books, many of them worn by now, but that opened the door for me to love reading and thank God to be where I am today. So, I think the time we take to read to our children as parents, the time our teachers take to help sometimes our students one-to-one who are struggling, truly makes a difference. So, that's something to keep on going, and I think what a beautiful legacy that our former First Lady left us, who was also a daughter of the Hudson Valley, Ryan New York.
This is Tobias.
I'm not to report.
Bishop Williams.
I don't really have too much, too much to report, but just in response to all that's been said here tonight, more specifically, Mr. Crescendo and Ms. Blumenthal, Ms. Blumenthal, in relations to the Holocaust, there was a quote that was put out, "For those, those that, those that forget, or those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat the past." And I think it's very important in this particular day and age with so many atrocities and things that are going on around the world, that we don't forget past atrocities so that we don't repeat them. No matter where you come from, no matter where you come from, there has been some things in the past that have been extremely tragic, and it's important to keep those things in the forefront of our minds so that, that future generations don't have to experience. No matter what anybody says, I believe this experience, experience is a good way to learn, but in my circles, experience is also a fool's way of learning. Some things we don't have to go through if we just keep the information in front of everybody. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for doing what you did with the March Against Violence, you and Vince.
Mr. Crescendo was on point.
Yep, very good, you know. Just a couple of announcements, and one kind of special recognition, we have with us this evening the new, and relatively new, reporter for the Middletown Times Show Record, Lana Bellamy. So, you're in, come on, stand up so people can see who you are, Lana. And today you did a very nice story on the music program. Music program was recognized as one of the leading music programs by the National Association of Music Merchants. So, that was good. And yesterday you did on the Common Council and the R S R O program. And your partner is also here this evening. And you want to introduce your partner, Lana?
Yes. We know you.
And I'm sure, I'm sure we'll see more of you as the time goes on, and as you mentioned, you're originally from Kentucky, but by way of Alabama, correct? And it's all in the family because your husband works for Spectrum. There you go, as a reporter for Spectrum, good. Well, thank you for doing what you do. And Kevin Witt, and I'm sure you interact with Kevin, our community liaison, and does a wonderful job. And a happy birthday to one of the Gomeses here tonight, you didn't mention that.
Hello to my daughter Abigail, 14 years old.
Happy birthday tonight.
Yes.
Just, just...
No.
Just a couple of announcements. As Mrs. Zucks mentioned, tomorrow, there is a tricky tray at Carter Elementary School, and the doors open at 5:00, and the calling begins at 7:00. The PTO always does an excellent job with that, with that tricky tray. On Thursday, April 26th, not a board meeting, but the Elks Lodge will be putting on a little dinner for all those students who worked this year on some of their programs. There'll be students from the high school, NJROTC, there'll be students from Monhegan, and there'll be students from Maple Hill and their parents. Their parents are also invited, the families are invited. April 28th, I was asked to announce this, and I was going to actually do it anyway, the Maple Hill PTO is having a color run. That's something new. 9:00 AM, it's on a Saturday, and 9:00 AM is for the check-in and the Zumba. And Mrs. Tobias and Lake Zuma, and I'm sure she'll be there. And the race starts promptly at 10:00 AM, and if you want to know any more about it, just the mhpto@ecsdm.org. just, uh, the mhpto@ecsdm.org, and you can find out the costs and, and so on, and about registration.
I understand, Mr. Perino, you're going to be joining me there.
I may be watching, I don't know if I'm going to be zumba, and Mrs. Knapp got me to do that once, as I remember, a couple of years ago. You, you see, I'm wearing this T-shirt tonight, the, uh, uh, Little Mermaid T-shirt, uh, Twin Towers put the program on, put the play on. Great job, Amanda Mita, uh, the music director, Allegra Smith, uh, assistant director, Jessica Morgan, the vocal director, Catherine Lucas, and really, the students did a great job on this, the costumes, the sets were good, and really, uh, uh, speaking with Amanda, the, the whole production is student-run, and before this, uh, we talked about the Shrek production, and that was also tremendous with, uh, Jim Schofield and Greg Bennett, so a lot of good things going on in, in this district. So, I'm about done, many people covered it, and there was, covered things, and there was nothing new and compelling for some items, so, uh, I'm not going to, uh, repeat, uh, repeat what Vince said, or Paul, or Keisha said, or Lou, so. Good, so, anything else? On to the next, we have recognitions, announcements, and community reports. Now is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Uh, come on up and sign in, you have four minutes, and we ask you to, um, keep to that time limit, even though sometimes we do not, thank you. Past President, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Mr. Perino, or should I say Phil Rizzuto? Your presentations are kind of reminding me of him. Um, I, I have a couple of things, uh, to bring up, um, and the one was you just mentioned was the, uh, the article, ni- nice article, by the way, um, about the music program, uh, you know, kudos to the, to the teachers in the, the program, um, fourth consecutive year of having one of the best and most accessible music education programs in the country, um, as, uh, recognized by the National Association of, um, Music Merchants, so one of only 583, um, districts in the country, that's, um, you know, great job, thank you to the, the, the teachers who work very hard, um, to, um, instruct our students in the district, um, it's a great program, and, you know, they deserve praise for their hard work. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to mention were, um, one of them is that, um, school board petitions are due, um, next Wednesday, the 25th, the, um, the vote for the budget and for, um, board members is, um, for three seats on the board, is May 15th, and each year, the district, um, the, the Board of Education, I should say, um, holds a Meet the Candidates Forum, and, uh, Mr. Perino has asked me to moderate that. Um, this year, I did it last year, too, I was honored to do that, and I'm happy to do it again, um, so we have set a date for that, which will be, um, May 10th at 6:30, right here in this space, and it, uh, it appears that this will be the one chance for the public to, um, to hear from prospective candidates for the board, like, like I said, three seats are, um, up for election, so whoever, um, turns in a petition will get a formal, um, notice of, or an invite to the forum, and we'll also go through and give them, um, kind of instructions on how the forum will run. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to talk about was something that, uh, Mr. Cosenzo and I are doing, um, together in June, um, the two of us are, um, embarking on a three-day bike ride, Vince has done it, uh, a number of years, what's this, this will be the eighth for you? Dr. Eastwood did it one year, and, um, you know, I, I decided to take on the task this year, so both of us are looking for, um, folks to sponsor us. We, um, i- in doing this, we have to raise $2,000, it all goes towards, um, the ALS Therapy Development Institute, so if you, you can visit my, some of you I'm friends with on Facebook, if I'm not, or, um, I have, um, forms here that you can fill out, we'd appreciate your, um, support, um, if you so choose, any amount is great, and, um, you know, we, I, I know somebody who, who has it, was diagnosed with it now, um, it's a terrible, um, illness, and, um, every year, 20,000 Americans are diagnosed with it, so that's one in 150 people in the country. So this is a good chance that you will, um, know someone, and maybe a good chance that, that they will be someone who you know quite well. Thank you. Um, so, you know, if you'd like to donate, um, I have forums, you can see me, you can probably get in touch with Vince, too, we would certainly appreciate, um, any financial support that you'd like to give.
Why don't you leave some, Andy, can you leave some on the table there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take them as we go off here.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, um, if you're in a room with 50 people, you're, somebody in that room is going to know somebody, or know somebody who knows somebody who has ALS, which is Lou Gehrig's disease. Um, Andy and I personally know somebody here, um, associated with the district, and, um, I got started in, uh, 2011, uh, Frank DeGeorge, his, uh, wife Lori DeGeorge was a, an executive secretary here, and it was the most horrific thing I've ever witnessed in my life, um, he contracted it about, he passed away May 11th, 2011, he contracted it about three years previous to that, and it's a death sentence, there's no way around it. Stephen Hawkins, there are so many different versions or strains of ALS that, Mr. Doctor Hawkins, whatever he, what strain he had, uh, took him 30 years, but the average lifespan is between two and five years, and it's just horrific. So this organization last year raised $800,000, and, and 90% of it, which is a pretty good percentage, considering what some fundraisers pull away, um, goes directly to the ALS TDI Organization in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and right now they're working, there's, there's, a cure is a long way off, but right now they're looking at ways to slow the disease down, um, and they're also doing genetic research to find out where it's actually coming from. So, we're going to ride 280 miles in three days from Boston to Greenwich, and there are 450 riders that will be with us, and, uh, we, we, for the sake of anybody associated with someone, the, the person with the disease and their families suffer just as much, so, uh, on their behalf, we'd appreciate any help you can give us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosenzo. Past President, Dr. Johnson.
We welcome the presidents. My name is Paul Johnson, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you this evening. Um, just reflecting on your comments during your reports with the Holocaust, it's always a time to reflect, and I think, in my adult life, it's pretty much an adult life at this point, um, I think persecution against one is persecution against all, and that's, that's the way it is, so it's not to be ignored in any venue. With respect to journalism, um, I, uh, wrote a pet column way back in the prehistoric years for about 11 years for the Times Herald Record, it was weekly, you can look in the archives, and when I sat in your space, I also did some of the PR for the district as a volunteer. I've worked with a lot of reporters for the Times Herald Record. It's not as easy as it looks, uh, Lana also covers our beaten city government, I'm a Lana fan, and go Lana. Uh, with respect to the SRO conversation, uh, the mayor kind of gave us an update on how things are going, there's lots of details, it's not as simple as, okay, here you go, here's the person, uh, but it sounds like we're all working it out very well. Mr. Perino appeared before the council on Tuesday and acknowledged that we're in a, maybe a new age of cooperation, I think you're correct, and I think all of us as elected officials, although we sit in different venues, we serve the same constituency, and our constituents expect us to cooperate with each other, so that's a good thing. And now I'm going to go to the PSA portion of my presentation, uh, we're having our cleanup on Saturday, the 21st, um, Sue Dupuy has sponsored that for several years now, she's a self-proclaimed little lady for the city of Middletown. If you choose to cooperate, and many people from the school community will be doing that, they're convening at, uh, Festival Square, 9:00 AM on Saturday, uh, all the equipment that's required will be provided, deployments and transportation to various locations will be provided, it's nine to noon, and we've had a very good turnout, and we're looking forward to that on Saturday. I also wanted to remind the public, and, and especially the school community, that Chief Huanchu instituted a program called NICSLE, I hope you've all heard of it, uh, it's a community, uh, communications program, all you have to do is text 888-777, the word Middletown with the capital M, you're in the system, you'll know about, uh, the, um, Little League Parade, you'll know about the cleanup day, you'll know about water main breaks that are going to interrupt service, you'll know about any, uh, issues of community interest, both good and urgent, so that's, uh, 888-777, text Middletown with the capital M. Uh, also, I want to acknowledge the fact that the chief is relatively new to the position of Chief Huanchu, but he's been with the, uh, with the force for quite a few years, and he really reached out this year, uh, with a community town meeting, and also a business town meeting for the bid, um, it was well received, lots of issues were raised, and I think he gave two important messages, one of which he said, there's about 70 people on the force and 20-some-thousand people in the community, the community of the eyes and ears of the community, and when he says it, he means it, if you see something, say something. If you, if you think it's small or big, call it in. You're going to say, oh, my neighbor will call it in, because he knows about that, too, but he may not. Call it in, and if you don't get a good response, call often, and he said that twice in a public venue, so I really think that he means it, and the police department can be reached at 343-3151. There's also an opportunity to have a tip line on the NICSLE line, and you can access that on the, on the web. Lastly, a little pet peeve for the city of Middletown, this is still PSA, uh, we're doing our, um, trash pickup, uh, one week per ward, and there's been an ongoing issue that we are not allowed to pick up electronics, but if you drive through the ward, you'll see TV sets and other things, they're not going to get picked up by the city, they can't get picked up by the city, they should not be left out on the sidewalk, uh, we have designated a day for electronic pick-off, it's May 12, uh, pickup, rather, I'm sorry, drop-off, it's May 12th, from the hours of 8:00 to 3:00 at the, um, so, center on Monhegan Avenue, uh, each resident is limited to five items, and you have to show proof of residency, and that would really be a big step toward making this, uh, a happy event. Thank you very much, I appreciate your cordial cooperation.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Anyone else suggest the board? I'd just like to introduce one, uh, candidate for the board, John Lacerne is in there, you want to stand up, John? Thank you.
Mr. Perino, can we just ask, uh, Dr. Johnson, was it 888 and 37s or 27s?
38s, 37s.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Perino, on the cleanup day that, uh, Dr. Johnson brought to our attention, students or young people that participate are going to, I believe, get an award or a certificate of recognition from the city of Middletown, from the mayor, so that's something, uh, uh, young kids, uh, could, uh, look into, you know, be a fun experience.
Thank you for reminding us of that, Mr. Gomez. Any letters? No letters, okay. Uh, personal action items, if there are no objections, can we vote on 21A, 21B, 21C, and 21D? May I have a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, remember, we have these personnel, uh, recommendations at, at least a week before, so we can, uh, ask questions to the administration. Any introductions tonight? Superintendent's report, budget?
Budget.
You got this loaded up, gentlemen? Yeah, you're going to do this? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Perino, members of the Board of Education, Middletown School Community. Uh, this evening, in essence, is the summary of what has been taking place for the last several months, as we deliberated, uh, very diligently about every line item and every component of the proposed school budget for the 1819 school year. Tonight, what I, I plan to do is to summarize some of the key, or salient, or most interesting components of the budget, um, all of the items and figures that you see this evening on the, uh, overhead screen here, uh, is gone over with, has been presented, uh, we've deliberated, uh, each one of these exhaustively, so that we would be able to have a very, very, um, appropriate budget, but a very, very mindful budget of our taxpayers who support the budget. Here is a budget summary of all of the line items that comprise a school budget, and that is administrative program, instructional program, capital projects, capital program, the benefits, and of course, as has been mentioned several, several times, uh, this evening, as well as last, uh, Board of Education meeting, we are including in the budget this year, um, school resource offices, acronym known as SROs, on each of our seven buildings. I'd just like to bring your attention to two items on this particular slide, one of which is the capital project, where you see an 18% plus increase from the previous year. Please understand that we've included in the next slide or two, we'll show you, uh, over $4 million worth of projects, uh, that are included in the budget, that were been discussed, the resurfacing of the track, the replacement of the video board, the replacement of the turf field, believe it or not, it's almost 10 years old, uh, that surface, uh, and the library renovation, uh, that we've been talking about for the last 18 to 24 months, and there we're going to make that library, um, more up-to-date in terms of a collaborative area, uh, and we will bring to the Board of Education and the public exactly what that will entail, but that will be a capital project included into this budget. Uh, the remaining part of that budget increase were just the general operating expenses of the school district, um, equipment, uh, other items that need to be repaired, and so on and so forth. The other item that I think on this particular summary is important, is that there's an increase here of about 5%, a little over 5%, a little less than 6%, I should say, 5.82% there, on, from the budget increase from last year. And again, a great deal of that had to do with the increase in the capital line, as I just explained, we're included in the budget, that these things need to be done, uh, so that we can continue to provide our students and our community with the top-notch program. Next slide, please. Now, we can, next one, we went over that. Additional instructional budget requests, again, all of this is included. Mr. Tuttle, probably about two meetings ago, mentioned the additional buses, due to the increased enrollment, um, that we have overcrowded situation in some of our bus, uh, lines right now, and we wanted to make sure that the students are comfortable, but more importantly, safe, so we're adding, uh, buses to, uh, our overcrowded, uh, bus runs in a, primarily, but not exclusively, at the elementary level, as well as our middle school. The math coordinator, a key additional instructional support to our district. As you know, for many years, we've had a K-12 literacy coordinator, and now we are articulating similarly with all of our support personnel, to provide all of the teachers from kindergarten all the way up to grade 12 with the support necessary to ensure, uh, that the new standards, the next generation of standards, which are moving away from, uh, the current standards that we are going through right now, to update and to meet the needs of the school district and align to the state curriculum. A psychologist, we talked so much about the need for mental health and support in that area for all of our students, but in particular, we were looking at the increased enrollment at the high school. Right now, as we speak, we have over 2,100 students at our high school, and next September, uh, with that will increase, and the increase in our two middle schools will only eventually increase our total population to that high school, very close to 2,500 students. So we want to provide extra... So we want to provide extra support so that they continue to focus on the instructional programs that are offered, engaged activities, and they have a productive role inside that community, as we saw some of our students earlier this evening. As a result of the increased enrollment, we need another physical education teacher there, so that the ratio between the current physical education staff and students are a reasonable and safe, appropriate ratio for positive learning. The same thing holds true at our Twin Towers School. A .5 teacher will help provide additional assistance to the current staff there due to increased enrollment. The technology teacher, as we move into the world of technology and the applications that they bring forth in terms of either further their education and/or in the military or in the business world, we need to make sure that our students are competitive, and therefore, we would want to make sure and assure that all of the instruction that they want to participate, as that high school in terms of elective is consumer-driven, consumer being the students, and they're seeking out our technology classes. And also, we have provided that facility, the state-of-the-art facility that revels not only the Hudson Valley, but throughout our state, as we have constant visitors into our collaborative cooperative spaces. Special education teachers, here is due to increased enrollment and compliance issues. There are certain regulations, federal and state regulations, in which we must maintain compliance with the ratio between the different programs, between teacher and student. Also, the increased enrollment, you'll see in another slide as we move forward through the presentation this evening, that our special education costs are higher than other school districts of similar constitutions, and also similar school districts throughout the state, and the state numbers, because we have a higher population in our special education department, because we have brought back, remember, many of our students from special education programs from the BOSI centers, as well as when students arrive to our school district, whether from in-state or out-of-state, if they have a required educational plan that requires special programs, we are required by law to assess the actual program that would be aligned to their needs and so forth, and therefore, we do have an increased population need there. Music teachers, again, you have an increased enrollment, you want to provide a different elective courses, you need more programs and teachers to do that. And here, we are responding to that increased need. Our students, as you can, again, earlier this evening, we are one of the top schools in the country, one of 500-plus. How does that occur? Well, to give a variety of different instruments, different vocal groups, all in the area of music and music education, we want to continue increasing that. Clubs, take a few minutes here, this is a new concept we have. Not clubs, because there's been many clubs in our secondary and high schools primarily. And there've been very few clubs at the elementary. As I have been speaking to administrators, as well as teachers at the elementary level, who are clamoring for the opportunity for their students to participate in clubs, we came up with a concept of having a district-wide allotment of money, so that going through the process of creating a club continues, so that we can provide our elementary brother, but not exclusively to them, but we will focus most of that allocation to the elementary students, because there is a plethora of clubs at the secondary level. That's not to say that we would not entertain any new clubs at those levels, but we want to bring back this opportunity of engagement to our elementary students. And right now, it's one example of that. This year, this spring, as we move forward in our school calendar, Maple Hill Elementary teachers are putting on a full-blown drama performance of Beauty and the Beast. So this is just one example of engagement activities that were in a club that was created just a few weeks ago, in the early part of the school semester, to have this occur. Also, there's been also proposals for math clubs, different racing clubs for females. There's been a whole, how should I say, litany of requests for clubs. So this is a need that we are addressing through our budget. Additional non-instructional budget requests, here, again, for school safety, school resource offices. Security aides, we're increasing, in addition to the school resource office that will be assigned to the high school, three additional school aides. Remember, we've added two major areas that were not in existence prior to last year, our lower level, our collaborative area now, and also our third floor, as well as trying to provide a wider presence, a more visible presence of safe and secure situations in our school. And it's just not going to only happen with our school resource officer, but also ancillary to that program. Now we're adding on three more additional school security aides. The clerical, obviously, we've, in previous budgets, we had to reduce some staff, and now we're trying to replace that staff, because we need someone at that main office, the same person throughout the day, and that's why you see a .5, because right now, there is a .5 person. And the remainder of that day is from other offices inside the high school, which depletes their needs and their responsibility and workload. So we don't only have to play Peter and Paul around the checkerboard to make sure we have all of the offices covered there. Technology is increasing, obviously, with all of the additional teaching, all of the programs, all of the requirements and mandates that the state education department has put on school districts, in terms of the back end of all of the reports and technical data on various departments from the state education department, has become necessary to increase, you know, part-time to a full-time person there. So that's why there's just an increase of a .5. And there, you have the different cleaners because of the addition of spaces, and utility tradesmen needed because of other size of our school district and the needs that require to meet those needs. You know, we've been discussing about reserves, there's been a lengthy discussion on several meetings about the reserves. Please understand that we are very, very mindful of every tax dollar generated for our school programs. And we have used for health benefit savings, over $1 million occurred because we moved out of the consortium to self-insured, and that, by, that itself saved us over $1 million right now. Unappropriate fund balance. Historically, we put about $5 million to offset some of the cost of tax levy. We've increased that significantly to just a hair under $6 million. We have a workman compensation reserve of $500,000, an employee retirement reserve of $500,000. So we are using the monies that have been appropriated and not used in our reserves for targeted purposes, to close the gap, to not have increased taxes beyond control. Our proposed budget this year is $189,966,000, and that is about a 5.8 cent increase from the previous year. Tax levy, please see, it is purposely put in red. 1.87 tax increase, far below what would have been appropriate under the tax cap, far below that. Our tax levy equal out in terms of money of $75 million plus. The tax levy increase from 1718 is about $1,400,004. So therefore, we must keep in mind, what would be the tax levy? It would be very presumptuous on anyone to try to even take a stab at how much that would increase because of the equalization rate in each of the communities in which you reside. However, the tax levy is 1.87, and on the other slide, you'll see how that fared over the last five years. Vote needed to pass the proposed budget, that will be on Tuesday, March 15th, so we need 50 percent of the voter participation plus one. As I mentioned before, where are we with expenditures per student? We are below the state average, as you see, we are below the state average in similar districts with our population. On the special education side, as I also mentioned, with complete transparency, we're a little higher than similar districts, and we're a little higher than the state. Why is that? As I explained previously, because of the increased population that has come to our school district, we are required mandated to address those needs. Also, we have taken students back from the BOSIs, which have, you know, costs money to create these programs, and so on and so forth. But we do have a large population, a little bit about 2 percent, 2%, 3% higher than the state average. We sit around 14 percent of our student population, and the state average is about 12 and a little less. So I wanted to show that to the community, so that you can see that we're very mindful of expenditures, and we are not overspending per child. As I mentioned just a moment ago, the tax levy, I had put out the last four or five years of the tax levy, where we were each of the years, and you can see that 1.87, the current proposed in this budget, is far below what we have been in the last several years. Budget hearing, two weeks from this evening, Thursday, May 3rd, where people will come up to the board and talk about this, and ask questions about the hearing and the budget vote, which sometimes is called Super Tuesday, is Tuesday, May 15th. So on behalf of the entire Middletown School Community, everyone that participates in this, we thank you for your continued support, and I always remember, it's always with the students in mind. I'll take any questions at this time.
Wait, Mr. Gomez, we're going to go around, okay? Got to go around.
My microphone, I don't think, is on.
Second opportunity, address the board, but we can, we'll go right down, and then we'll come back to the opportunity, so.
Sure. I have my lifeline here.
Board member comments now on the, on the budget? Mrs. Knapp, do you want to start us off? Mr. Gomez?
I just want to say that I think this is a budget of excellence. It shows fiscal responsibility. It promotes first and foremost our students' academics, ensuring them a bridge to their future. It shows a commitment to our school's safety, and I think credit goes to our constructive relations with our local government, city of Middletown and town of Walkill. And a reminder to our state legislature that we need you there going forward, so we could continue that, because we owe it to our children. It shows a commitment to our infrastructure, that we'll continue to provide the best infrastructure that's suitable for academic excellence. And at the same time, it shows accountability and responsibility to the work and sacrifice of our taxpayers, in which we keep ourselves within the tax cap, while at the same time, we have a healthy reserve for the future. And I think much credit goes to our superintendent's leadership, and of course, to Mr. Tuttle, who I said before, it's, has the common sense approach that we'd like to see hopefully in the future in Washington to assure the country fiscal responsibility with its budget. If I ever ran for president, I'm taking it with me.
I like to keep him here.
But that will mean.
Mrs. DeBiase, anything new and compelling?
Nothing new and compelling. But I do want to just express my sentiments as far as the preparation of the budget, the programs that we are offering for our students, and by doing this, we've also created an environment in where we're very conscious of the tax rate, and the low tax cap certainly is a feather, really. So thank you, Amy, Mike, and Richard.
Thank you.
We're quite a bit below the tax cap. The tax cap was 2.83, was it not?
Extremely below the tax cap. It would have been permissible.
2.83, the tax cap?
2.67. So we're below that. 2.67, would have been under the tax cap.
That's what I'm saying.
That's good. Mrs. Bloominow, anything new and compelling? Mr. Crescendo, new and compelling? You always ask me about new and compelling.
Dr. Johnson, just talking about that term before the meeting started, new and compelling. No, but it's such a well-rounded budget, I mean, you're dealing with mental health issues, security, constant development of our programs, improving the infrastructure, as Mr. Gomez said. I don't know, I was one of the liaison persons with the city, talking about the SROs, and I said this at the city, the common council meeting Tuesday, that, you know, it's unfortunate that in this culture today, we need something like an SRO in our building, the way things are going. But it's a welcome addition. But one thing, I said this before, that the addition of the SRO doesn't mean that we're lax in our security. When your students arrive at this building, they are as secure as they're going to be in any public school building, if not more. It's unfortunate that that money couldn't be used to, I hate this word, to harden the buildings, improve security here, but the benefit of an SRO, as far as we're concerned, is that the presence in the building, as I was quoting the paper today, that my experience with SROs when I worked at BOSIs, was that they build relationships with the students that not only is helpful here in our building, but also out on the street, in any of the schools. So they're going to be in our elementary school right through the high school. So that's a good thing. It's a very, very good thing. And the other part of it, too, something you might take for granted, is that the police car is parked outside. When the officer arrives, his car is outside, he or she is in the building, and I hope there will be a female SRO involved here if that happens. And that's a good sign, too. So the city, both the city of Middletown and the town of Walkill guaranteed us, as well they can, that the person who takes these positions are going to be well-trained, and they're going to want to work in this building, in this milieu, in this atmosphere. So they're not going to be assigned to this building. So that's a very positive thing. So this is a program that I believe is definitely, definitely going to work. Thank you.
Yeah, just to add, Mr. Crescendo, there are other issues, as Mr. Caprino alluded earlier this evening, that we are taking place in terms of security, how should I say, strategies, that obviously, we're not going to divulge at this time, as we have been recommended not to. So in addition to the addition of security aides, you know, school resource officers, we are taking measures to even increase what we have already hardened over the last couple of years under Mr. Warren's leadership, but also currently looking at what we're doing now. We're underfoot right now, we're in conversation, beyond conversation, about taking additional steps to harden the building, in addition to what's in that budget, which will take place in the ensuing months. Also, the school resource office is going to come with a vehicle, a patrol vehicle, and remain outside the building all day. But in addition, what's occurring right now, we have had nothing less than positive relations, discussions with both municipalities, law enforcement chiefs, and as well as the mayor, the Cefanoe of Middletown, as well as Mr. Diana, the supervisor of Walkill, to assure us that wherever possible, they will have during arrival of students and dismissal, additional personnel, as best as they can. So there are measures here that may be beyond just the resource officers and security aides that, you know, are part of this budget. There are other measures being taken place, so that we are trying to maximize as best, as reasonably possible, for all of our inhabitants. That includes the students, of course, our total staff, and parents that come, and members of the community that come to our school buildings. For example, you know, Mr. Gomez mentioned about the program that was here. Mrs. Creed and I came for a good part of an hour to visit the program. These hallways were just jam-packed with parents, grandparents, extended family members. It was a well-received program, and we're opening up our buildings, we want to make sure that even on these special events, as well as every day, that everyone who comes here feels safe and secure, and the smiles of when they arrive are the same when they
I think everybody has pretty much addressed the same thoughts that I had. I do want to say, I do want to say, in response to what Mr. DeMaro just said about the buildings when they're opened up, it has always been my experience as a parent, that the process that someone has to go through in order to get into the building has always been very, very, very good. And I believe that, you know, even walking into the building myself, you know, most of the staff know me, but they ask me for my ID. And if they didn't ask me for my ID, I would me for my ID. And if they didn't ask me for my ID, I would say something. Because, you know, it's the same way, on the back of my credit cards, I write CID. And when I give my credit cards to the person, to a person or cashier, and they don't ask me for my ID, I get a little upset because it's there for a specific reason. And so, I, I, as I said, even when we were going through what we went through a few years ago with the swatting issues, I had the most utmost confidence in our staff and, and our process. And then to know that we're, we're steadily improving on that process, and it's evident in this particular budget. I know that you can't please everybody, and, and, and that goes without saying. You, you can't please everybody. So there's always gonna be somebody who, who's going to have something in here that they don't like, something in here that they don't want. There's gonna be members from the community who will have negative to say, and people that will have positive to say. But at the end of the day, I think that this is a good budget. I think it's also important to note that as a part of this budget, if you look at, if you look at that first page that we looked at, the proposed budget summary, that in the benefits section, we're saving, we're, there's, because of the self-funded healthcare, we're, we're, you know, we, we, we see a, a three point zero seven percent decrease in, in the expenditures in that particular part of the budget. So I think that it's been crafted very well. Are there other things that I'm sure that we would love to, we'd love to see? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, this is, this is a positive move. The capital projects are much-needed capital projects. And again, those, those capital projects are coming at no cost to the taxpayer. This is coming, they're coming from, they're coming from fund balance. So it's being used wisely, it's being handled wisely. And so kudos to, to our superintendent and to, and to our other administration, Mr. Tuttle, and, and such a good job. So, thank you. Thank you for doing such a good job. And we move forward from here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing new and compelling for me. Everybody covered this. Mrs. Knapp?
So as Pastor Williams just said, there's some people that you might not be able to please all the time. Fifteen years on this board, and I've never voted no against a budget. And tonight, I am going to vote no, for my own personal reasons, which my cohorts know about. Am I against this budget? Not at all. I'm totally against this budget. It's the best one I think we've had in fifteen years. I'm just against the, the concept, if we're getting SROs, they should come all from, I understand the concept of Walkill and Middletown. I understand that totally. I understand the concept of unions. I'm a union rep at the hospital. But there are just some things that I think, in my own opinion, are wrong, and that's why I'm gonna vote no on the budget. It's not for the budget itself, it's just some of the underlying aspects.
Thank you for the comments, Mrs. Knapp. Well, now it's, I, it's about time to vote on the budget. And motion to adopt, I'm gonna read this, and motion to adopt the 2018, 2019 budget resolution as presented?
Roll call, please.
Well, I, I want to read this resolution.
Okay.
And I will do a roll call, I plan to. Thank you.
Do we get a motion in a second? Are you reading it, or before we give you a motion? Or do you want a motion now?
No, I'm gonna make a motion, then I'm gonna ask for a second.
You're gonna read it first?
And then I want, then I'm gonna ask for a, a, a motion in a second. Let me start again. Thank you. Motion to adopt the 2018, 2019 budget resolution as presented. Be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the proposed district budget for the 2018, 2019 school year, one hundred and eighty-nine million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars, and a tax levy increase of one point eight seven. Be it further resolved that the proposed district budget for 2018, 2019 school year shall be placed on the ballot as proposition number one for the May fifteenth, 2018 budget vote. May I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Any further discussion? Now, may we do a roll call vote on that? Thank you.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Budget passes eight to, seven to one, six to one. I'm sorry, Mrs. Zucks and Mr. Pierre aren't there, aren't here right now. Now, I, I think we'll go back and, because we have the second opportunity to address the board. So, let's, anybody who wants to address the board? Mr. Wilcox, did I see you, your hand up?
Please wait for my agenda. Good night, Kevin.
Good night.
Good night, Kevin.
Anything else? Okay, no board member comments. We have quite a few action items.
What about second opportunity?
Second opportunity address. I thought we, I had asked for that.
I guess there was that.
Go ahead, Andy.
We didn't realize you were calling the second opportunity. We were saying good night to Kevin, so.
Oh, okay.
Like me missing that last seven, or...
I just want to commend you for this budget. I, I mean, and it's, congratulations to all of you, Mr. Delmore for your first one, and Mrs. Creedon, Mr. Tuttle, members of the board. I think you're very lucky to have a, a, a good budget this year. There's some things in here, maybe, you know, and you kind of alluded to some of, some people might have issue with, but when you look at the individual items in here, and, and I could just, I could see somebody going, oh, resurfacing the track, putting in new turf. But that field brings in so much money to this community that it, it's hard to, you know, cast dispersions on, you know, spending money on something that i- is a boon to the community. All those, the, the use of that facility, the events that take place there, you know, it's great for the community economically, especially when you've got the, the playoffs that come in, the, the soccer tournament for one. And I don't know, what, is this year lacrosse or track?
Next year's track.
Tracks this year?
Next year.
Next year? Okay. But whichever ones are, that thing is getting used so often that it, it's great for the, the community.
People have championships at different levels throughout the next five or six years.
Yeah.
Which brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars to this community.
Right. For all the busloads of, of players coming in and their families, and, you know, I mean, I've worked at that concession stand, and people are amazed that that's a, that it's a high school field. So to not upkeep that would be a real shame. And once you let it go, once you, you know, you, once you're lax on it a little bit, it's, it's a, it becomes a struggle. So I applaud you for, for, you know, putting money into things that, that, that need attention. And, and things on here that, you know, we had the article in the newspaper about the music program. You're bringing in more, you know, another music teacher in the high school. It's all good. I don't know how you could, you, you could take issue with a, a lot of the things in here. And the, the sum total of things here is just, it, it, it's all beneficial to the students, to the staff, to be in a position where you're increasing staff, being able to bring in SROs, and on top of that, the three additional security aides in the, in the high school. At the last meeting, the one mom came and she was concerned because of the, the proportions of things. Of course, she didn't stick around for, you know, the complete answer, which Mr. Johnson and I both had comments, but she was out the door. Not that, you know, that's, she wanted to have, say her piece, which is fine. But, you know, I think that understanding all of that, the way that you all do, is different from, and it's hard for you to be able to express all those things because it's security. And you can't tell all of those, you know, the, the little things that you do to keep the buildings and the students and the staff safe. So thank you, you know, when, when it's, come May fifteenth, when it's my chance to vote, I'll be voting yes for this. So thank you for all your hard work. Once again, Mr. Tuttle, Mrs. Creedon, Mr. Delmore, and board members, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other opportunities to address the board? Anyone else?
Okay. Let's move on to the action items. Approval of financial memorandum number twenty-three, motion to approve twenty-three as presented, which we had in our board packet. Board docs?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to approve special service memorandum number twenty as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to approve the 2018, 2019 instructional calendar.
So moved.
Motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Delmore, do you want to?
Yes, I just would like to remind the community, as well as our school community, that currently State Education Department's Board of Regents is revising the requirements for instructional days, holidays, you know, emergency days, et cetera, and how that's arrived at. Obviously, they are very understanding that school communities are looking for their instructional calendars. So parents, staff, and all people related to the school districts need to know the instructional calendar for the ensuing school year. So they have advised us to go ahead with the current regulations. And right now, they are receiving feedback at the state level on the proposed changes to the current regulations. And they will not submit the final regulations until July first. Obviously, that is a little too late for, you know, plans, as I just mentioned. So there may be some revisions to our current calendar. Please understand that will be based on, if any, on the revisions and the new mandates regarding the school calendars. Just wanted to alert the Board of Education and our school and parental community out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Delmore. The motion on the floor. I've asked for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of election of Michael Bello to the Orange Ulster Board of Cooperative Education Services. Be it resolved that the board hereby casts its vote in the election of Michael Bello to the Board of Cooperative Education Services. Motion on that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Both these members of, they're currently members of the cooperative board, and they've been on there for many, many years. But I just feel a little slighted that they don't come in and talk to us about their philosophies and what direction they want to take Bosse's and, you know. But that's politics, I guess. That's my discussion.
I agree with you, Mr. Cre...
Mrs. Knapp?
Well, remember last fall, the representative from Goshen came and introduced herself, and they were like assigned a board, but she hasn't come back.
It, it could be, there are so many component districts that it's, it's hard for a member to, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
But I think, we're not asking them every meeting. I think once in a while, you know, just to come and, even to bring us up to date on their programs. They have to have some new programs and some new offerings that the students are doing. It would be nice to know.
Maybe that can be transmitted to the superintendent.
I will be speaking to Mr. Heck about that request.
Thank you.
So we knew we had the right person there. Well, we are gonna vote on their administrative budget. Just saying.
So we have a motion on the floor. We've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to approve the election of Eugene Pavick to the Orange Ulster Board of Cooperative Education. Be it resolved that the board hereby casts its vote in the election of Eugenia Pavick to the Board of Cooperative Education Services. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this candidate? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the adoption of the resolutions, Orange Ulster Bosse's Administrative Budget 2018, 2019?
So moved.
Now I read the resolution.
Sure, sorry.
That the enlarged city school district of Middletown Board of Education casts its vote to approve the Orange Ulster Bosse's 2018, 2019 Administrative Budget in the amount of seven million forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, and that the district clerk is hereby authorized to execute the certification of such vote and transmit such certification to the Orange Ulster Bosse's District Clerk at fifty-three Gibson Road, Goshen, New York, one zero nine two four, or Charlene Depew at oubosse.org. Let's see, we've had a motion, we've had a second on that. Any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mrs. Knapp, go right around.
Go ahead.
I am really upset. This is the first I'm hearing about the amount or seeing anything in print. And I feel that should have been disseminated to the board. I'm very sorry to, to vote on something, and I know we don't have much choice with the administrative budget. Every single school district in Orange County pays a portion of that administrative budget, but we're not informed.
I think it brings back the issue raised by Mr. Crescendo, that the, the reps to the Orange Ulster Cooperative Board should come and report to us, okay, what's going on there, what's, and so that we have a better picture of what they're doing. So.
Mrs. Knapp?
I remember last year, we voted against this. And I'm gonna do it again. I'm just having a negative night.
I think we voted for it last year. I think the year...
No, we didn't. Was that?
It was the year before we didn't vote.
The year before.
The year before we did, last year we did vote, the year before we didn't.
And really, let's be honest, a negative vote doesn't mean anything, but it makes me feel better.
Okay.
And Mr. Perino, if we really think about it, both the superintendent and the business officers would come to the board and give us a breakdown of their budget and the reason. I remember going way back when the meetings were held at the Middletown High School, and when the meetings were held at the board office.
Was it on board docs?
Yes.
It's not on my board docs. Here.
Oh, they left yours out, Miss Be.
Well, it's not here.
Mrs. Blumenau, you getting it on board docs? I thought it was on board docs myself.
There's no little, unless it was a separate board doc, there's no little...
There's no little, unless it was a separate board doc, there's no little-
She's, Mrs. Blumenau, go ahead. Did you have?
Do you have it?
I don't have it.
Do you have it?
Yeah, it's on the future.
Did you see it, Mr. Gomez?
No.
Pastor, you saw it?
I thought I saw it.
Did you see it?
Is this something that has to be approved today, or we could table it for next time?
You can't table it.
You can't, it's got to be.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any difference if we both know. It makes no difference.
We don't, but they first.
And we don't have them to come, because then it takes another hour.
No. Well, maybe they can come for an executive session.
No, that doesn't work. Nope. We can't even get our executives to-
Mr. Kresenzo, do you want to comment? Well-
Well, today we have that expectation, we have that little-
I'm actually going to wait. Evidently, it is on board docs, but it's very, very difficult to find it. It's not like a tab that you can, you have to go through a number of different places My question is, that $7 million, that's our share? You said their budget was $7 million, the BOSEs budget?
John, he's talking to you.
Is that our share?
Did you read?
The administrative budget in the amount of, or to prove the amount of, no, that's-
That's the total budget.
The total budget.
Okay, thank you.
That's only the administrative budget. That's not, that's not-
Would you like to adjourn to executive session to discuss this? Motion to adjourn to executive session? We got-
Don't look at me.
Second on that?
Anyone second to adjourn? Do we have to adopt it tonight?
Do we have to adopt this?
I think we do. It has to be done tonight.
Okay, there's-
You can vote no, it's no big deal.
There's a motion-
Everyone else votes yes without looking. I just made a motion away from the person who raised the second.
Any second on that?
I did.
All in favor of adjourning to executive session?
Nay.
Let's have a roll call vote on that, because I'm, people are saying yea or nay.
Well, no, John will make it possible. Mr. Kresenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Gomez?
No.
Mrs. Knapp?
No.
Mr. Brian?
No.
Mr. Keer?
No.
Pastor Lee?
Yes.
We don't go.
Not to add further confusion, Mr. Perino, not to add further confusion, can you explain what the administrative budget is? Because some people might be confused with that, with services.
Let me email it, hang on.
Did you email? He's going to do it. Just give him a minute. That's an evil laugh. Did you find it?
All right.
It's not easy to get, Jim.
The budget should not be that low.
They don't count.
Why don't we skip this action item and go on to other action items? And we'll come back to this, okay? Let's go.
Vince, did you get it? Was it there before, though, on board docs?
The next action item while we're looking is action on a student disciplinary appeal. Resolve that-
Sorry, John.
Resolve that the Board of Education appalled the superintendent's decision made at the superintendent's disciplinary hearing regarding student 0240450, following consideration by the Board of Education for the appeal by the parent or guardian may have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We discuss in exec session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of election worker, Sherlett Stewart, for this 2017-2018 school year. Motion to approve election worker, Sherlett Stewart, for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Mr. Gomez?
So moved.
Second. By Bishop Williams. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Continuing on, approval of the resolution to increase hourly pay, hourly rate of pay for home instructions. Motion to approve the resolution to increase hourly rate for pay for home instruction as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now I have to read this resolution. Whereas the superintendent of schools recommends that the hourly rate for pay for home instruction be increased from $25 per hour, whereas the superintendent seeks to set the hourly rate of pay for home instruction at $45 per hour for home instructors that are certified by New York State Education Department as a teacher, whereas the superintendent seeks to set the hourly rate of pay for home instruction at $40 per hour for home instructors that are certified by New York State Education Department as a teacher, whereas the superintendent seeks to set the hourly rate of pay for home instruction at $40 per hour for home instructors that do not have New York State Education Department certification as a teacher. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon the superintendent's recommendation, the Board hereby approves the change to the above-mentioned rate as recommended. I believe the motion's on the floor.
Yes, sir.
We had also a second on that. Any discussion? Mr. Delmore, do you want to say anything about this?
Certainly. The increased requests here are very competitive-minded. What do I mean by that? In looking at the current rates, we were far below, matter of fact, in one of those categories, we were on the bottom of the 18 component districts of the Orange Ulster BOSEs area. How does that impact us negatively? We have a very difficult time attracting individuals to do these particular positions, home instructors who work at students after hours that have been assigned to home for various reasons. Our substitute rates needed to be looked at. Matter of fact, the home instructor rate has not been increased in the last 19 years. So, you can see that those rates were way, way overdue to be revised and looked at to be competitive. We certainly are not at the top level of offerings of per hour, but we're more, much more competitive, so that we can attract the appropriate personnel in these positions all across each one of them. In the nurses' position, we have not been able to secure a substitute nurse on a regular basis because of their current salaries offered as substitutes in various school districts in our county, and therefore, in deliberations with our nurse practitioner, this figure was more than necessary to do. Also, in terms of our substitutes, you can ask any parent about the children coming home from time to time of having their class to be divided among other classrooms, because we do not have adequate number of substitutes in our classes. So, it is with that hope that we increase these rates to be extremely competitive and attract the necessary personnel to fit these very important roles that support our school district and children.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Delmore. Any further discussion on this? Let's see, is a motion on the floor? Do we have a motion on the floor? We had a second on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Delmore spoke on the next resolution, but I have to read it. Motion to approve the resolution to increase the daily rate of pay for substitute teachers as presented. Whereas the superintendent of schools, superintendent recommends that the daily rate of pay for substitute teachers be changed from $95 per day for a New York State Education Department certified teacher, and from $80 per day for a non-certified substitute teacher. Whereas the superintendent seeks to set the daily substitute teaching rate for a New York State Education Department certified teacher at $115, $115 per day, and whereas the superintendent seeks to set the daily rate for a non-certified substitute teacher at $100 per day. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon the superintendent's recommendation, the Board hereby approves the change of the above-mentioned rate as recommended. Motion on this?
So moved.
We've discussed this, Delmore discussed this. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Delmore also described the increase for retired teachers. And I'll have to read this. Motion to approve the resolution to establish a new substitute teacher rate for retired teachers as presented. Whereas the superintendent of schools recommends that a new daily rate be established for retired teachers that perform substitute teaching services for the district, whereas the superintendent seeks to set the daily rate for a retired teacher that's up at $125 per day. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon the superintendent's recommendation, the Board hereby approves the establishment of the above-mentioned rate as recommended. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, sir.
Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the resolution to increase the daily rate of pay for substitute nurses?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. I have to read this. Motion to approve the resolution, increase the daily rate of pay for substitute nurses as presented. Whereas the superintendent of schools, superintendent recommends that the daily rate of pay for substitute registered nurses be changed from $95 per day and from $80 per day for substitute licensed practical nurses. Whereas the superintendent seeks the daily rate for a registered nurse licensed in the state of New York at $125 per day, and whereas the superintendent seeks to set the daily rate for a licensed practical nurse licensed in the state of New York at $100 per day. Now therefore, be it resolved that upon the superintendent's recommendation, the Board hereby approves the change to the above-mentioned rate as recommended. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the school safety resolution. Motion to approve the school safety resolution that presented, which was, we've discussed this, and it was on board docs, if I remember.
And I have extra copies for the members.
Do you want to say anything about this, Mr. Delmore?
Here you have, in front of you, a resolution that secures the more than philosophical agreement to provide appropriate personnel inside our school districts, as we've been talking not only this evening, but the last several Board of Education meetings about security in our school districts. This resolution here indicates to you that what would be, what we would commit ourselves to, obviously, all what we're talking about, not only about school resource offices, but hardening our buildings, being very vigilant about security issues. Over the last several years, we've improved our, how should I say, entrance into our buildings. I cannot get into any of the school buildings without a display of my school ID and signature and where I'm going and who am I going to see. So, that's, that's something to be said. And one day, in this building in particular, I came in and I had it in my briefcase, I didn't have it on my lapel, and the secretary at that day said, "Good morning, Mr. Delmore, do you have your ID?" So, it is a process that is diligently followed, and I must say, and that it is very important that we do this very, very clearly, so that we maintain all of our processes to be safely in mind. And this resolution here is only going to enhance that. It's a commitment, it's a philosophy in which we want to adhere to, and I would recommend that the Board pass.
All right. Okay? Well, I shouldn't be there. I don't think we have to read that.
Do you want me to read?
No.
No, we don't, we're not going to read that. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So you just have five, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, now we got six.
Five, okay. Now, I think we're going to have to, before we have the committee reports and the audit committee, we're going to go back to...
If I may, to answer Mr. Kresenzo, it's a $7 million total budget, of which $950,000 is our commitment to that $7 million. So, it's less than a million dollars contribution by the Middletown School District. What it entails is their personnel expenses and expenditures, their district superintendent, the assistant superintendent, so on and so forth, also retirement benefits, benefit packages included in that. So, that's what we're looking at here when you're looking at the administrative budgets, primarily their salaries and their benefits to those salaries, and all their supplies, the general operating expenses to administer administratively the BOSEs program.
Well, if we're looking at what we sent to us, it's up approximately 9%, and our budget is up 5%, 5.82 versus 8.99. I guess you can see my train of thought.
Any, any further comments? Okay, do we have a motion on the floor? I think we'll call for a roll call vote on this. Vince?
Still legal.
Do we have a?
Still legal.
Still legal, yeah.
Yeah, there was a first and second in the original motion.
She's out there, should I get her?
We're in quorum.
Oh.
We're still on a quorum, we still have a quorum.
Maybe she left.
We still have a quorum, yeah.
We still have a quorum.
Let's get a roll call vote on this.
Yes, do the motion over again, so that it's-
Okay. I think I'd better to make this real legal, have to read this again, I guess. That the enlarged city school district, Middletown Board of Education casts its vote to approve the Orange Ulster BOSEs 2018-2019 Administrative Budget in the amount of $7,40,742, and that the district clerk is hereby authorized to execute the certification of such vote and transmit such certification to the Orange Ulster BOSEs District Clerk at 53 Gibson Road, Goshen, New York, 10924, Charlene DePue at oubosys.org. May I have a motion? Second. Hey, we've discussed this, and let's have a roll call.
Is this Lou now? Yes. Mr. Kresenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Gomez? Is this Lou now? Is this Brian?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, the vote on that was?
Four.
Four?
Four and one half.
Okay, so it passes.
You need five.
You need five, wait a minute.
You need five.
No, we don't have it. That's right.
Yep. It does not pass.
So, it does not pass, okay.
Right, because you got, yeah, for a majority, everybody would have had a vote yes. Everybody would have had a vote yes. Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, now we'll go on to committee reports. Motion to approve the Audit Committee minutes of January 25, 2018, as presented. Any discussion, Mr. C? You were good on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the internal auditor's report. Motion to approve the internal auditor's report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports? Any committee reports? Board member comments? Anything new and compelling? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Next meeting is Thursday, May 3. Let's vote on the adjournment. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we're out.